Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 6, 2022 City Council Meeting, City of Los Manos. We will begin with invocation by Pastor Mike New from St. John's Lutheran Church.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many gifts you bestow on this community, the gifts that help our crops and livestock to grow and multiply, the gifts that help our business owners thrive and support this town. We ask you send your spirit to guide our civic leaders and give them to act wisely on behalf of your people. We ask you watch over the first responders who act to serve and protect the people of this community. As we celebrate our nation's independence this week, we confess we often neglect our rights, abuse our privilege, and avoid our obligations. Keep us from selfishness that stifles freedom, from narrow-mindedness that limits freedom, and from hatred that destroys freedom. We beseech all of this in the name of your son. Amen.
We'll now call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. We will ask Police Commander Rayna to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commander. Roll call, Ms. Mallory. Here, we have a quorum. Item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to consider approval of the agenda? Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Rayna, I'll second that.
I have motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Motion by Ms. Lewis, second by Mr. Yamas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Now move on to the public forum. Item five. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. At this time, I'd like to invite the public come forward to speak.
My name is John Gothier, and I own the Little Caesars here in town. We opened in 1992, and I've just come down to talk about why did you fire the city manager? I own 64 restaurants. We're getting ready to build the Crumble Cookies here in town, and this is the most proactive, business-friendly manager that I've ever... I'm in 64 different cities. I have never had a city manager reach out to me to help me with my process. In fact, most cities are taking four to six months to get a permit to build a restaurant. It's all red tape and bull crap. I'm constantly being slowed down, and this city manager, honestly, I had really no connection with him, but he reached out to me and was helping me through the process. And then the next thing I know, he's being fired. Why was he fired? Are you gonna say something?
We are unable to speak on that item.
Well, why is that? If he's a public servant, and you're public servants, why are we not able to understand the reason for his termination?
I will hand it over to the city attorney for a moment, although we're not supposed to comment on items or discuss items in public forum, but I will allow Mr. Vaughn to explain the law.
So unfortunately, the Ralph M. Brown Act doesn't allow the city council to respond to any questions during the public forum, other than to refer items to staff or to respond that the staff will look into it, but the Brown Act doesn't allow the council to enter into a discussion with the public during the public forum.
Okay, so I just want the record to be shown. I do business in eight states. I have 64 different cities I do business with. I have never had a better city manager who is proactive to help me through the process, and I think it's ridiculous. Whatever politics are going on here is garbage, you know? We ask business owners, support the city and pay taxes, okay, through our businesses, and when you hire representatives who are pro-business, and then I don't even know how long he was here, but it was like, for me, it was like a four-month relationship, and all of a sudden, he's gone. Now I have no ally, and it just seems like there's something going on. I don't live in this city, but I've been here, like I said, since 1992 as a business owner, and let the record be shown, I'm not happy with whoever made these decisions, and I don't think it's fair that, as the city of Los Manos, that they don't get to know what was the reason, because I think it's political, and I think it's garbage.
Good evening. My name is Lori Bellotti. I've lived in Los Manos for 52 years this month. Today is my birthday. This is not normally where I would choose to be on my birthday, but I have been so distraught for the past three weeks, it was important to me that I come and voice my frustrations. I am here to state my shock and confusion over the dismissal of our city manager, Josh Panero. I do not understand. What were you thinking? Were you considering that Josh has a passion for Los Manos and really wanted to do the right things for our town? Josh was upfront from the beginning. He wanted to make changes for the good of our city, and he was always focused on doing what was right. He grew up in Los Manos and had a vision of what Los Manos could become under his leadership. He was totally committed to learning about the inner workings of our city. He put in many additional hours so he could give support to workers and so he could gain a background about the many aspects of city departments. He wanted to be involved and get to know the city employees so he could run things right. I suspect the changes he tried to implement were not accepted by some employees. Accepting change is often a problem when people have been accustomed to doing things their way for many years. Another thing different about Josh was that he was out and about, observing what needed to be done, talking to the residents and business people from Los Manos, just like the gentleman before me said. He was always accessible to the public and listened to concerns. This was a refreshing change. Every time I contacted Josh, he responded. We had many good discussions. We disagreed on some things, but he was always mature, not immature, and respectful, not disrespectful. Were you thinking about the many accomplishments Josh has achieved for our city in the short time he has been city manager? How smart it was for you to hire a person from the business sector to be your city manager? Josh was making needed changes in all departments. He was working on improving landscaping and properties in Los Manos in order to improve the aesthetics of our city. Here are a couple of examples of what I'm talking about. He started communication with Los Manos Unified School District, and he was able to work with them to resurface and clean up their corner at Seventh Street and Pacheco Boulevard. Prior to Josh becoming city manager, Pacheco Park was an eyesore. He immediately got it cleaned up, giving Los Manos a much better image. He found out there had been no scoreboards at Colorado Ballpark for many years. He fixed that. Look around town and notice all of the other improvements he has made to make the aesthetics of our city more appealing. Josh was also networking with companies and businesses who could be interested in relocating to our town. Josh had many contacts and connections that would have helped us recruit new businesses. He was meeting with local business leaders to find out what he could do to help them, just like the gentleman before me stated. He was aware of the properties that needed tenants and was working to fill those properties with businesses that would benefit Los Manos. These are just a few of his accomplishments. I'm so sad that we have dropped the projects Josh worked so hard to implement. Now I am sure our city will be spending many thousands of dollars to hire a consultant to find a replacement for a perfectly capable city manager who never had a chance to finish what he had started. I am a taxpayer, and I think these extra expenditures are not necessary. I am disappointed that you did not share the vision that Josh had for improving life in Los Manos. I believe that he was not given the respect he deserved, nor is he given the time required to make a difference for the city he cares so much about. I do not understand your reasoning. Again, I must ask you, what were you thinking?
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Alan Cotta, citizen, longtime voter in our once-great city. I say "once-great" because you three city council people have done a great disservice to the constituents of this city and to the people in general. After a comedy of errors with at least three previous city managers who have all been fired, you at least gave them a longer chance, and they had no accomplishments, unlike Josh Panero, who in nine short months was doing more for the city and its voters than you council people have ever done for us with the accession of hiring Josh. You three should be ashamed, and after you rehire or reinstate Josh, you should all resign. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Anna McCauley. I've been a Los Banos resident for 25 years. I've never seen a variety of city departments in such disarray and so short-staffed at management positions. The police chief cannot be the interim city manager because they would have nobody in management left at the police department with the commander or with the fire department. Now we don't have a budget director or finance director. I have heard from several city employees that work in different departments. They have talked with Josh on a number of occasions. He had worked with a number of corporations that were really interested in coming here. I don't know who the corporations are. I didn't dig that deep because I just thought that, you know, at some point, maybe this will come out, but they were sincerely interested in coming, they had vision, and now you cut him off at the knees. These people are not interested in coming. Are we gonna play Tommy Jones all over again when he would not allow Amazon to come into town? You know, maybe we were a nickel short. I don't know, but it's stupid to fight over a nickel. You know, when you've got businesses that are willing to come in, and all they did was just go down the road to Hollister or up on I-5, and you've got it all from Patterson on up with all these distribution points, it is really, really sad. You know, what were we thinking? Some of the people have alluded to it already. We're so short-staffed, and here we want to run the city manager off, fire him at the knees. We will never... You know, I don't know what the reasons are. It's the Brown Act. I respect that. Eventually, maybe somebody will say something, but I'm not fishing for it. But the fact is that he had some things going, and I don't know all of those details, but they were good things. And why cut us off at the knees when we're trying to bring in big business? We cannot continue to operate as a small town, working in the past and hoping that somehow or another people will just fall into the city, do some business here because they feel sorry for us. That will never happen. You know, it's just... And then, you know, we've got so many businesses that open up in town, but for God's sake, they're not on living wage. We've got the tomato plants, that's probably about the best. We've got Morningstar, but when you talk about fast food, I'm sorry, that's not really a full living wage. We've got too many of those. We've got too many of the small things that really won't bring us industry that we need to encourage people to stay in town and not go over the hill. But, you know, for... But it just really... It's frustrating to me because I can't understand how we could have a lot of things going. So many people have said, "He has been very accommodating to hear people out, to share ideas, to go out and look for these businesses, and then we cut them off at the knees." I don't understand it. How are we gonna get our reputation back as a city that really wants to bring in business when we do something that may have been just a little bit too short-sighted? Maybe we should have waited another six months. I don't know what the reasons were for firing, but I'm saying, what would have been the problem with waiting a six or nine months and see some of this stuff come to fruition? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Iris, Local 4703 Union Representative. Members of Local 4703 and CAL FIRE were working closely with our last city manager on ways we could improve the current state of our fire department. Now that he's no longer employed with the city, I would like to bring the following matters to your attention. Los Manos Fire Department is no longer dealing with its staffing shortage. We are facing a staffing crisis. Staffing should not be a luxury item. It cannot be, if we can afford it. The city of Los Manos serves better than that. The men behind me have stepped up. They have put everything on the line to be continuing providing the high level of service, but they are also tired. They're crippling. They're ready for change. Getting by with bare minimum is not how we should be operating 2022, but our MOU or minimum staffing is four. Two at each station, no to meet, and if PA 1710, which is national standard, we would have to have 14 members at a residential structure fire on the first alarm. We currently have a total of 14 full-time members. We're putting ourselves and our commuting in unnecessary danger with these numbers. The population is now roughly 45,000 and increasing along with the call volume, and our staffing has changed very little, even with the two measures in place. For the last few months, the Los Manos Fire Department has been operating without permanently filling the positions of both the fire chief and assistant fire chief. It has been difficult to find the right candidate due to the voids within our management and operational structure. Not having battalion chiefs, training officers, and prevention officers would require these chiefs to be on-call 24/7, 365. Our equipment is also in dire need of attention. We currently have both our frontline engines with mechanical issues. One has been sitting for weeks, and our reserve has over 100,000 miles. Our ladder truck is now over 30 years old and still unstaffed. In the last year, it has spent more time at the shop than in service. It wasn't until recently, with the help of CAL FIRE, that we were able to focus on a replacement plan. Retention recruitment is an issue in our department that cannot be ignored. Just today, another member has accepted a job offer with another agency. I cannot say I blame him. He will be the eighth one to leave our department in the last 18 months. Nothing is being done to make members want to stay. Salaries are not competitive. Careers opportunities are not possible with our current structure. In 2019, the city of Los Manos hired a consulting group to build a strategic plan for our city. The recommendation was staff each station with three firefighters and build a third and staff that with three more for a total of nine firefighters. Los Manos received $5 million to build a new city that would include that third station. This was almost three years ago. We're still waiting. I believe it would be very responsible for council to look at the current issues happening due to mismanagement and lack of leadership. We're at a point where a decision needs to be made, even if that means another agency provides the service our citizens deserve. Thank you.
My name is Patricia McCoy, and I've been a resident of Los Manos for over 20 years. I think the termination of Josh Panero as our city manager was extremely premature and a rash decision. Terminating any personnel after a mere nine months in a position is reckless and absurd, especially when he is stepping into a mess left by the previous city manager. There is no way nine months allows enough time for Mr. Panero to assess the affairs of the city and begin to implement improvements, which I might add, he managed to do. If his termination was more a matter of clashing personalities, then again, nine months is not enough time for proper discussion with Josh regarding issues, the presentation of suggested corrective measures, ample time for Josh to make modifications, although I'm not really sure why he has to be the one to solely change behaviors as opposed to other personnel, and then another meeting for reassessment and additional course correction. I certainly hope that the council and the city attorney ensured proper documentation had occurred, otherwise the city could be looking at even more financial loss if there is ever a suit to be brought for wrongful termination. Additionally, that June 15 closed session portion of the council meeting that terminated Mr. Panero as city manager should never have been handled the way it was. One meeting should be allocated as discussion only. This would allow council members to voice concerns, opinions, receive evidence, if you will, and then reserve any vote until the next regularly scheduled council meeting, if needed. This allows each council member to take the information that was shared, digest it, and consider the ramifications of how they would vote, whether it was yea or nay. Instead, in my opinion, Mayor Freya, Councilwoman Lewis, and Councilman Lamas voted on pure emotions and without any time to consider, or more importantly, prepare this city for the rash decision made by their vote to terminate. This has and will end up costing Los Manos so much more in both money and progress. There's the added cost of casting the net for a replacement, spending time on interviews that take attention away from other important areas of focus. The caliber of candidates is likely going to be very low, and of course, once a new city manager is hired in this current economy, that salary is probably going to be even more than what is best for Los Manos. I am extremely disappointed and embarrassed with the votes made by these representatives. I do want to conclude by publicly thanking both Councilman Jones and Lambert for making decisions that are actually in the best interest for Los Manos and not based on emotion.
Good evening. I'm Jess Madrono, been a resident of Los Manos for over 50-some years. I'm not gonna speak like all the others. My question is to you, Mr. Freya. I've been sitting over there and watched a lot of people come up here, and you've been rude to them. You have not paid attention to what they're doing, or they're with their paperwork, their computer. How about having a little common courtesy and listen to what's going on? You're the mayor. So can you stop doing what you're doing and pay attention to what these people are saying? Because apparently, you're not. Thank you.
I'm actually taking notes.
Hi, my name is Bob Plas. I live in Los Banos. I've been here for 14 years now.
I've been here for 14 years now. You know, I tried to call City Hall a couple of weeks ago. No one answered the phone. Called back a couple of times, still no answer. Called the city council, saw the city hall today. I need to talk to somebody about the council meeting here tonight. They sent me off to another extension, got there, got, she said her name, said she's not in, and that was it. No voicemail, no nothing. Why is that? That's just absurd. This is 2022, for Pete's sake. And then the other thing, this city manager, how do you hire somebody and nine months later fire him? This tells me that you didn't do due diligence when you hired him. I mean, otherwise, that or you're incompetent. I don't know which, you know? But how do you, you know, it's just craziness. And transparency. Every one of you, when you ran, I'll bet you used that word transparency quite a bit. That's the biggest joke around here. There's nothing transparent about this city at all. And I can give you specific examples, which if you want me to in private, I'll be more than happy to. So, you know, you people need to do that because if, if things aren't better, I'm going to run for mayor. Lord knows, I can't do any worse.
Good evening, mayor and council members. During the public forum for the special city council meeting on June 22, 2022, a few residents expressed that some of council entangled themselves in matters that involved city employees instead of leaving it for the city manager to take care of. I strongly agree with those citizens. However, now that some of you have taken matters into your own hands by firing City Manager Panero, I would like to take this opportunity to clear up any misconceptions. I resigned early this year after working for the city's finance department for three years. Immediately after being hired, I knew the finance director and the accounting and budget supervisor, who also serves as the elected city treasurer, created an intolerable, toxic, and hostile environment. During the public forum at the last two special council meetings, citizens expressed their concern regarding the city's turnover of employees. However, they did not mention the turnover in the finance department. The finance department lost four employees in the last six months of my employment, and in the last three years, a total of 10 employees left the department, including myself. Considering the finance department only employs up to nine, only employs up to nine people at any given time, a turnover of 10 employees is a great loss. The finance director was hired by the city of Los Manos to, quote, "clean house" after the embezzlement scandal took place. Employees who experienced her presence as a supervisor have confided in me that she wreaked havoc on the department, including making employees cry and then laughing about it afterward, as well as firing them left and right. Unfortunately, I have witnessed and experienced some of this behavior. I can confirm that the high turnover rate is not due to the level of difficulty that their tasks entail, but that it is due to the sickening behavior that is implemented by the finance director and the accounting and budget supervisor. Such behavior has been accepted for many years by the human resources director, who also serves as the elected city clerk and the assistant city clerk slash HR analyst. City Manager Panero was hired with the consensus of the city council. Part of the reason City Manager Panero was brought in was because you all knew that there were cancerous, high-level staff who work at City Hall, and change needed to be implemented. Each of you believed that he was more than capable of executing such change. Disappointed does not begin to describe how I feel about the choice Mayor Faria and council members Lewis and Yamas made to fire City Manager Panero. I can tell you all firsthand, he was excelling at his job and that he cared about the employees at the city of Los Manos and the city as a whole. This has been proven by council members Jones and Lambert as they made public statements noting the great achievements that City Manager Panero was able to accomplish during his short tenure with the city. During the special council meeting on June 22, 2022, a letter that was written by the name or pseudonym Sharon Wilson bashed City Manager Panero. The terrible things that were stated in that letter does not accurately represent the behavior and attitude he expressed during my employment. Upper-level department staff started to feel pressure to change because he was unveiling the toxic atmosphere that they created. Those toxic upper-level employees would have been the only ones to have fed such false malicious information to this supposed Sharon Wilson. I firmly believe that the four city council, city employees in the positions mentioned in this letter are the employees that got to Mayor Faria and council members Lewis and Yamas, which led to the firing of City Manager Panero. I am urging you to attempt to redeem yourselves by selecting a city manager who will ensure toxic employees, such as the accounting and budget supervisor, finance director, human resources director, and assistant city clerk slash HR analyst, are held accountable.
Hello, my name is Claudia Nunez. I live at the mobile home park where everybody here has put the homeless. You know, we've come to talk to you guys before. I'm not here to talk good about anybody because you guys don't deserve it. Where the people, most of the people that live at that mobile home park are seniors. Every day, we have to worry. When we leave our mobile homes, we have to worry if, when we come back, all of our stuff is going to be there. A lot of people, those homeless have broken into mobile homes. They've stolen stuff from outside. They've taken 10, 12, 15 bikes. They stole one of my friend's wheelchairs. I've come here and I've told you guys month after month, we're sick and tired of not being listened to. We need help. If you guys want me to get on my knees, I'll get on my knees. But we've been begging you guys to please help us. It's not fair. We pay our taxes. They don't pay shit. Sorry. Sorry, sorry. But we need help desperately. I don't know how, how to ask you guys. Like I said, if you want me to dance, I'll dance for you. I'm disabled, but I'll dance for you. I'll do anything. We need help. There's people there that are bedridden. They put their fires on, and I've been told by 911, oh, they're just warming fires. Take them to live in your front yards. Let them put their warming fires on at your house. See how you like it. You'd be terrified that your home is going to burn up with a warming fire. That's not fair to us. We have lived our whole life working to be able to live comfortably when we're older, and you guys have taken it away from us. By putting those people over there in our front yards, they've been having their stupid fireworks for five days, all night long. 12, 1, 2, 3 o'clock, you can hear them yelling about the drugs they're going to buy, about wanting to sleep with somebody. I have called 911 time after time after time, and every time, I get an excuse. And I've gone outside of my mobile home to, to look, to see if the police have come. They never came. I think we deserve some answers. Are you guys going to help us? If it was your parents or your grandparents, I'm sure you guys would have been on the ball and those homeless would not have been at their doorstep anymore. Please, listen this time. Don't just hear us, hear me talking, but listen to what I'm telling you. We need help.
Hello, my name is Shandra Lewis. I'm a resident of Los Manos, and I live at the Ranch of Los Manos Mobile Home Park, and I'm the assistant manager. You guys are getting used to me, and I thank you for letting us talk. But things seem better, but are they better? My grand nephew had his bike stolen off of his porch, which is a row behind me. They called me as the assistant manager. My bike is stolen. They cut the cable. They didn't just take it off their front porch. They cut the cable because three bikes were there. They had to come, they called the police. They told them where the bike would be because it's a neon blue, hard to, hard to hide it. They found it. It's tore up. This is, this just happened this week. We can't keep, I have my lawn mowers. I don't have room for them in my shed because I store other things in there, but they're, they're cabled together. Am I going to come out and not have a lawnmower to mow my lawn? The, the assistant manager and manager will get on to me for not mowing my lawn. So we need help, and I called the fired, I called the police department because there was a huge fire going on in the homeless containment area. I called them. That was, I believe, the Fourth of July. Also, Councilwoman Lewis, the last meeting we had, you had some questions that didn't get answered. You wanted to know how the needles and the other stuff got over the fence, how they get over the fence. I gave pictures to, I handed out a packet. I wasn't here. They handed out packets to you of the pictures of what went on. If you'll notice in one of those packets, if you still have them, that tall brick wall, they're sitting on top of that tall brick wall. There's nothing for them to keep them out. The tall brick wall, which is what, 10 feet tall, doesn't stop them. The razor wire doesn't stop them. The barbed wire on top of the fence doesn't stop them from coming in. It's a shorter path. Why they don't walk around is because they're lazy, and they want to come through the park to steal. So it's a shorter path to come through the park and go to the front to get to wherever they're going. It's the, it's the shortest path. And they climb over, they put tarps over the razor wire. I have pictures of that that I gave you all. They come over and they drop their needles on our side where our children in our area can find them, where our dogs, as they are walked, can get poked by them. Anybody with sandals on, if they're not aware of it, can get poked with them. And if you notice, your fencing for your homeless containment is tore up, tore up. I mean, it's not even new anymore, and it hasn't even been, what, a few months? It's tore up. There's sections missing. It's tore up. It doesn't keep them. And the great presentation from our police chief showed you all the homeless around the area and showed you the containment, but he didn't show you the homeless that are out in the field in front of us, that is just a garbage pile of homeless people, of garbage. And we have to put up with the fires. We have to put up with the noise. I called the police department. I'm two rows in, and you know, they're not next to our fence anymore. They're further away.
Just to let you know, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, okay. And that is, I'm done. But I did have a question. Will you be reading Marie Salinas's email? I do have, okay, thank you. Then I'm done. Thank you very much.
My name is Marion Sanus, and I'm probably the largest sales tax provider in this town. And what I don't understand is, why would you make such a quick decision? Did you talk to anybody? Did you, I mean, it doesn't even make sense. The guy hasn't been with us that long. Now, if he was stealing, or if he didn't show up to work, that's something else. But other than that, I've, I've heard nothing but good with this mayor. And Tom, you sit there sometimes with a smirk on your face. I supported you. I voted for you, but you may think it's funny, but it's not funny. You know, I mean, it's very important to this city. You're going to be like, you got Trump, and then now you got Biden, and we're paying for, we're paying for it. You know what I mean? No one liked Trump. No one liked him, but the things he did was good. So you don't have to like the guy. I have over 125 employees. I don't like every one of them, but some of them do a good job. But to me, this, this, to me, seems political. And Deborah, I supported you too. You know, I'm just shocked about this thing, how you can make a quick decision. Neither one of you two came and talked to me and asked me my opinion, you know? I mean, talk to someone, talk to someone who's been in business a long time. And the falses and the negatives. We could have had a closed meeting where I don't go gossip in town. All I do is work, you know? So I, I don't go gossiping, but at least talk to somebody, not just, you know? And maybe you were right. Maybe you were wrong. I don't know. But it seems like an awful quick decision, and I would hope that the next time you do this, that you would form a committee or something, at least talk to some people. You know, I, I understand, I guess we can't get any answers, but that's not right neither, you know? So just want to let you know that, okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Austin, and I've lived in Los Manos for 56 years, although I'm not 56, but I was so, I work at Los Manos High School for the past 25 years, and I met Josh as a freshman, and he was, you know, full of it and always talkative or getting things done. He came in my room to get his math done during lunch. I just want to say that some of you might not want to hear this, but every year, I use Josh as an example for my students because I have a picture of him when he went for a semester of school to Italy. And what they, they didn't know is, or you probably didn't, that Josh was the manager of Foster Freeze when he was a senior. He almost finished his AA by the time he graduated, and then he's transferred to Stanislaus, didn't take any of the breaks, worked the, kept going to school during that so he could finish. He, he popped in my class one day after I had told some students about him, and I said, hey, this is Josh, and this and that. Well, they clapped for him. They were like so impressed and so motivated that, that maybe they could do some of the things that he has done. I, I probably given out personal info, but anyway, it doesn't sound like someone who was mentally unstable would just have purchased his third house next to his parents so that he could protect them because there was a shooting on their street about a year ago. I wish I could have lunch with my mother every day. I think that was really ridiculous, and that, that just really bugged me, just because he has lunch with his parents. Some of you I know here and out in the audience have students, or, I mean, not students, but children, who are probably his age, and how would you like that if that happened to them? I, I don't think you would. Anyways, where am I? Let's see, Too Young, that was another thing that was said about him. I know that some of you sitting up there have kids his age, as I said. I am a voc ed teacher, so I'm all about getting students jobs and helping them work. There's a few firemen up there that I had as students. I like when I go to town and I see former students who are working and participating in Los Manos. I was so happy to hear that Josh was the city manager because honestly, I was pretty fed up with Los Manos, like, oh, my God, what's happening? There's so many people and not enough room and not enough streets. And when Josh, so Josh was, is a homegrown person too, like me, so he, I was really thrilled that like, oh, great, great, somebody is going to take a step to, you know, improve Los Manos. There's nothing we can do about the growth, so let's make good growth, you know, that we can all live with. Also, even, I do have students that work around town, and, you know, there was an incident that happened with him at Home Depot. After he started working here, I had a student who called to tell me, and he was really disrespected there, and I think that's really wrong. And I just feel that you're really selling him short because in the short time that he was here, it's pretty sad that that he was here, it's pretty sad that we had to wait for him to come to get the baseball fields to have, um, scoreboards. Um, I know, uh, teachers who have retired and also mentioned that they're happy to see students, uh, like the eye doctors, their former student, or maybe the plumber. So we want people to come back to Los Banas. You know, if you're going to go to school to be a doctor, hey, come to Los Banas because we need some doctors. Um, I just feel that also the letter that was written about Josh is like total defamation, malice, slander. Um, I think, I don't think the letter was actually written by Ms. Sharon Wilson, whoever the heck she is. Um, because in the internet, she, that person lives in Illinois, so I don't, I don't know who that is. Plus the letter was all hearsay. So, um, I just came up to support my friend Josh. He was my student. I remain to be, uh, friends with him. Um, I'm always supportive of him. I, I text him to tell him how proud I was of him when he did get, um, elected. I think that Josh won't be manipulated. Um, he has his own, uh, ethics and, um, ideals.
30 seconds. 30 seconds.
Really? Yeah, anyway. Uh, anyway, he's a good person. Um, he's actually a Christian man and I don't think he would do anything, um, that was wrong or unethical. And I just feel that he was unfairly let go and it's a pretty sad day for Los Banas. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carol Etchver. Been a voting resident of Los Banas since 1978. I know that ages me, but I'm proud of that. Um, Los Banas has had ups and downs. Lately, a lot of downs. A lot of downs that Josh came in to try to improve. We had a hard time in our life, uh, two years ago. Josh came over about six months after and he said, Ms. Etchver, what the hell has happened to Los Banas? I said, I know Josh. He goes, what the heck is going on? Why is this town falling apart? This isn't the town that we were raised in. This isn't the town that we respected. My parents live here. My parents tell me all the time what's going on. Everything Stephanie said is Josh beautifully said. Josh is an entrepreneur at its best. If some of you didn't like that because he was a go-getter, Josh did what was right. He did what was right for people. He was raised properly. He respected people. He was disrespected. He was used. You may have your personal issues with him, that's your problem. But I look at this group, I've watched city council meetings, you don't see this back here. These people are here for Josh. These people are here for the people that are suffering. Again, this isn't something I normally do. But you guys chose improperly to dismiss him. Yes, he wasn't a political figure that you maybe wanted to have here, that you maybe wanted to control. Josh came here with a heart, with passion. He accomplished so much in nine months that five city managers ahead of him could not accomplish. He's not costing you money. He's making you money. He's making us all money. He's bettering our city. I get so disgusted with politics as a whole. And I do get political at times, but today I'm talking from my heart. If you had any decency in your heart, in your brain, you would not search for another city manager. You would put your tail between your legs, you would walk up to Josh and you would say, we made a blanking mistake and you need to come back to Los Banas. I know, I know some of you, I have voted for some of you. I know I won't be voting for some of you again. And I hope we get strong, young. Age has nothing to do with doing a good job. Age is not always the best. I see if we could have five Joshes in this town pulling for us and creating what we need. So I think you guys need to rethink your thought. Don't go search for another. Go get Josh. Tell him, we made a mistake. Prove it. Prove how good you are. Prove what you can do for the city and he will do exactly what you ask for.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name's Michael Hughes. I live on Jefferson Avenue in Los Banas. I've lived here for 50 years. I've worked with a lot of city councils. I was, worked for the city for 30 years. I was very proud of the, of the city of Los Banas and my employment with the city of Los Banas. I've worked with councils for those 30 years that I worked for the city and I've seen some good councils, but I got to tell you, this is the worst council I have ever seen in my life. You, you have let petty jealousies and trivial personalities influence your decisions. One of you, I, I got a call from somebody from Home Depot several months ago. One of you got into a shouting match with Josh at Home Depot and made a complete blithering fool out of yourself. But you went on and were one of the first people to want to get rid of Josh because he wouldn't listen to you. And, and this needs to, uh, this needs to be brought out and, and Mariah Furia. I called you several days before this incident took place and I asked for you to call me back. You, you sent me a text, said you'd call me, you were really sick and you couldn't call me. Well, are you well yet? Because when are you going to call me? I, I'm really serious about this. I asked you to call me, you told me you would call me back. Are you too busy?
I apologize.
No, are you too busy getting ready to fire somebody? You could call in to, to make sure Josh got fired. I watched Josh grow up as a kid. I was at the police department. I watched him grow up. Josh sometimes did some really crazy things. All I had to do is tell Josh, hey, you shouldn't be doing that and he quit. He was a great young person. He was always very influential with the other young people in this city. But he came here, he did a lot of things that were good. I've asked the last three city managers to deal with the trees downtown that are all dead. You, you can't, you can't go downtown and see a nice thing about, you can't say anything nice about the trees in Los Banas because they're all diseased and they need to be taken care of. Josh put $200,000 in the budget, you all approved it, to fix the trees in the downtown area and to fix the trees in the area that I live in, over on Jefferson Avenue that are falling on people's houses and cars. But I don't think that'll ever get done now because you're going to cost the city another, at least the half a million dollars to find another city manager. I think it's going to be an impossibility for you to find a city manager because who'd want to come here after you fired the last two? And the last one only worked nine months. I wouldn't, if I was looking for a job, I wouldn't come to work for you. I wouldn't come to work for this council because I don't think you know what you're doing. It's just my personal opinion. You were elected by your constituents to do a job. You weren't elected to do your job, you were elected to do a job of what your constituents wanted. I don't think any of you checked with your constituents. I don't think any of you asked them what they thought the city manager was doing. I have a homeless situation right across the street from me. I had the people take reports, they had code enforcement out there. When the gentleman that is involved in the property asked to get the, uh, get the report from code enforcement, you redacted everything out of it because you didn't want to have the city involved in it. They told her she had to do something with the yard. So she paved it with boxes from Home Depot and put, put steer manure on top of it. I guess that'll solve it. Now we can smell, when the wind blows, you can smell the steer manure coming. She lives there every day. She put up satellite dishes. She has no power, she has no, uh, no, uh, no water, no garbage, no anything. But nothing can be done about it. Nothing can be done. Everybody tells us nothing can be done. So we need to get a council that can do their job. And I, and I believe that the three of you that decided this in a, in a nine-month period of time should resign, should go find yourself. Something else to do. Because you are not representing the city of Los Banas. All you're doing is costing us more money. And, and like I said, I've worked here, I worked here for 30 years. I'm, I'm very, very proud of the city that I worked for. And you guys have just made it a mess. And you need to think about that. You know, you, you need to be available.
About time, Mr. Hughes.
Yeah, I, I'll get to it. You need to be available. When people call you, you need to respond to them. That's what you, that's what you get that $200 for, is to respond to the citizens. So think about that.
Good evening. My name is Doug Begonia. I'm here to support Josh Panero. I've known him for over 30 years. I know that because of the Brown Act, you can't give answers as to why you decided to terminate him and that's fine. But I also, after hearing that letter that was read at the last council meeting, I know that most of you were hearing those words on a daily basis from workers at the city, one, your city clerk, almost word for word what was read was said to some of you here complaining about Mr. Panero on a regular basis. And I can understand wanting to not hear that squawking constantly. And so you caved and gave in to their wishes. But Josh was doing a great job. And all you did was hurt the citizens of Los Banas by doing that. So when it's time to run for reelection, and I know some of you may, there'll be those that run against you and those that want to run against them will help finance their campaign and campaign with them. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak in public forum?
Uh, hello. Uh, my name is Dr. Stephen Soares and I was always proud to say I was from Los Banas until your recent actions. I'm no longer proud to say that. My wife will attest to the fact that I like to be the center of attention. But I do not like public speaking. But what you three did was so wrong that it needed to be addressed. So here I am. Have any of you run a business of your own employees? If so, you should know the correct protocol in terminating an employee. It's apparent that a few disgruntled employees who didn't like doing what was required of them from the new city manager, started rumors and caught the eager ears of a few city council members. There should have been some investigation to justify your actions and you should have at least had a plan to move forward. None of that seems to have been done. The way it was handled shows how petty and self-centered some of the council is. No regard for the best interest of Los Banas. I was told that after the termination, Mr. Furia was presented with all that Mr. Panero did in the only seven months. His comment was to the effect, it would have gotten done anyway. Well, Mr. Furia, even if you didn't make that comment, why wasn't any of it done in the 20 years you were on the council? Or for that matter, when Mrs. Lewis was on the council for the last six plus years? We can't blame Mr. Yamas for those years since he was only appointed recently to the council with the help of Mr. Furia and Mrs. Lewis. Through the correct process, you, through the correct process, you would have the right to fire Mr. Panero since he was an employee of the city. But with that in mind, you are employees of the city of Los Banas and so we have the right to fire you. Our, our process takes longer and we need to exercise those rights at the ballot box next November or with a recall. And people say, if you don't like what's happening, run for council. Well, I wouldn't run for council because I love what Brett Jones is doing and he's in my district. And I wouldn't run for mayor because candidate Yannis will do a great job come November. So think about what you did. Thanks.
My name's Dustin Gropresso. Um, born and raised here all my life. Uh, I was the one that, uh, when the phone call came in that Josh was going to become the city manager, that I took the job of, uh, becoming the president of Los Banas Little League. And looking at the scoreboards that weren't working, fields that cat, you know, just bad, um, weeds everywhere. I made a phone call while I was watching my son's Pop Warner practice, um, on baseball fields and, uh, to Josh and started talking about the scoreboards and he said, you know, let me see what we can do. I said, we haven't been able to host an All-Star game for, for many years because we don't have a working scoreboard. Well, by God, Josh got in here, council voted on it, got the scoreboards passed, they're getting the process of putting them up. Um, but the biggest thing I have to say is, I'm 48 years old and I came back to this town because I love this town and I wanted to raise a family here. Myself, my wife, got an eight-year-old son. I don't know how much longer I want to stay here. I'm the head football coach at Los Banas High School and I love it. But by God, we got a guy that's in his mid-30s, single, comes to Los Banas. For what reason? To make the town better. Not to come and find a significant other. There's not much going on in this town to do that. So he left, he left something over the hill to come back here to make this town better and we got rid of him. So the three people that voted against him, maybe you guys need to think real hard with yourself, write that letter resignation and, uh, reinstall city manager Josh Panero because he was doing what needed to be done in this city. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in public forum?
My name's Janet Silva. Um, I just got home from the hospital with my husband, so I don't have something prepared. I see everyone else has papers. I just wanted, both he and I both wanted to show our support of Josh. And you've heard all this testimony, for lack of a better word, tonight? And it's very abundantly clear that he needs to be reinstated. And sometimes it's difficult to admit we've made a mistake and to correct that mistake. But now is the time that the citizens are calling on you to do that. We need you to make a stand and make the right one. I urge you all, and by the way, um, Councilman Lambert and Jones, thank you for your votes. That was wonderful. Josh is our neighbor. He's reached out to my husband and his, his business and we really would like him reinstated as, as our city manager. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in public forum? Ms. Maloney, do we have any comments by email?
Um, I have one comment. Dear Los Banas city leaders, good evening. My name is Maria Salinas and I live at the Rancho Los Banas Mobile Home Park. I just started a new job working the night shift. Since I can't make it to the city council meeting tonight, I am sending the following public comments via email on behalf of the Rancho Los Banas Mobile Home Park community. At the June 15th city council meeting, my public comments started by hoping to get some compassion from city council members. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Chief Breezy for his PowerPoint presentation. I am a very visual person and his presentation helped me better understand the homeless community as well as the challenges that the police department faces to keep order and at the same time, respect the rights of homeless people. In addition, I very much appreciate the comments made by Ms. Lewis, Mr. Lomis and Mayor Protem. I left the meeting satisfied thinking that our concerns are being addressed and I did not, and I did feel some sense of compassion. Nevertheless, our concerns are real and very important and the city must take action in order to prevent a tragedy. I must say though, I do feel some relief knowing that the numerous concerns, experiences and dangers that we have presented are all part of the meeting minutes and they are all recorded in the meeting videos. If or when something serious happens in our mobile home park, the city will not be able to say that they weren't warned. Thank you for your time.
All right. We will now close the public forum and go on to consent agenda. Also, items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Ms. Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 233327 through 233820 in the amount of 2,740,000. in the amount of $2,745,554.09. City Council Resolution Number 6523, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6524, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract amendment between the County-
Ms. Maloney, can we have just a moment yet? So, those people exiting the room. And could we close the doors once the folks have left so that we can, so they'll want to chat? So, we'll be able to hear our items? Thank you, Commander. All right, Ms. Maloney.
City Council Resolution Number 6524, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract amendment between the County of Merced and the city of Los Banos and to extend fire stopgap coverage for an additional two months. City Council Resolution Number 6525, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement for interim finance director services with BWK Consulting LLC. City Council Resolution Number 6526, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract between Placer Labs, Inc. and the city of Los Banos for mobile data analytics. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Any items that council would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mr. Jones?
Item D for discussion and separate vote.
Item D?
Correct.
D, okay. Item D. Any others? All right. So, let's go ahead and go straight to item D, and this will be for a separate vote. And that is being handled by Human Resources Director Maloney.
Can I answer any questions that you have?
Yeah. Why is a outside financial consultant going to be handling and manage the information technology consultant's contract? Why is that not handled in-house with another department head? Especially when our financial consultant is part-time at twenty to twenty-five hours a week? It seemed like this was a copy and paste from our finance director, and we just slapped it on the paper. And we're going to have the financial consultant that's going to come in, manage our IT now?
The current finance director is responsible for the finance department and the IT department. So, we just brought the job description over with all those scopes of services.
So, I think this needs to go back, and it's going to need to come back in front of council this part with the IT management. I'm okay with BWK Consulting handling the finances, but not anything to do with the responsibilities of our IT. That's going to need to come back because the way that I read it in the contract, on page forty on item five, contract administration, the mayor shall have the authority to act for this contract or will have the act for the city under this agreement. So, the way that I interpret this is that after twenty-five hours is up from our consultant, and he's no longer able to take control on any IT issues that we have, just in case we have something in the middle of the night, maybe PD has an issue or fire has an issue, and they need somebody of leadership to give a judgment call. They can't work for us anymore. They can't do anything because we are only contracted at twenty-five hours. So, then this would turn over to our mayor. And we know our mayor doesn't answer the phone right away. It takes a day to a week for him to get a response. So, this, I think, is reckless and needs to come back. And somebody, department head within the city, needs to take this on.
I know that currently, it's not a department head that's fully responsible for the IT services. We have a company called MidValley who is responsible for the management of the IT services.
But did you see we have a consultant managing another consultant?
And that's pretty common with all of our departments.
Yeah. I don't think we need it like this. I want to bring this back. Okay. So, I want the supervision of the IT department to be removed from BKS Consulting and brought back.
And you want to put that in form of motion, Mr. Jones?
Yeah. A motion to approve City Council Resolution 6525 with the removal of all information technology department's responsibility from the contract.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert? I'll second that. A motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Mayor Protem Lambert to approve City Council Resolution 6525 with the amendments regarding the IT as recommended by Councilmember Jones. So, let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lomis?
Yes.
Feria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Now, Cheryl entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second? Ms. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Yamas, a second by Councilmember Lewis to approve the remainder of the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda is approved as amended. I'll move to item seven, public hearing. And we have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing A. First, if you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item seven A, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of an amended groundwater sustainability-- I'll let the doors close. All right. To receive public comment and consideration of an amended groundwater sustainability plan will govern sustainable groundwater management actions with jurisdictional boundaries of this plan located in the Delta Mendota Sub Basin, groundwater basin number 5-022.07 as encompassed by the boundaries of the city of Los Banos Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And for this, we go to Public Works Director, City Engineer, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for deciding tonight. So, what we have in front of you tonight is the considerations, for your considerations to approve the groundwater sustainability plan. This is the amendment to the current plan that has already been adopted. So, just a little background. Back in 2014, California has passed a series of legislations that include SB 1168, AB 1739, and SB 1319, which intends to create a framework for managing our groundwater resources sustainably. Collectively, this three legislation is also known as SIGMA, which stands for Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. In that same year, the Department of Water Resources has been tasked to prioritize and designate the critically overdraft basins. As it stands, City of Los Banos is located within the Delta Mendota Sub Basin, which is considered a critically overdraft basin. As part of this requirement, the city was required to form a groundwater sustainability agency, or GSA, by June of 2017 and to consider the adoptions of the groundwater sustainability plan by January 2020. On January 18, 2017, the city council adopted Resolution 5831, designating the City of Los Banos, creating the City of Los Banos GSA, and together with other GSA within the area, that's eleven other GSA, including the City of Newman, City of Christine, Los Palos Fireball, Mendota, as well as Turner Island Water Districts, the County of Madera, County of Fresno, and Merced County to adopt a GSP that is known as the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractor GSP. This GSP was ultimately adopted and approved by council on December 4, 2019. Again, as a requirement of the DWR, this was submitted to them back in January 23, 2020. As part of the oversight by the Department of Water Resources, they have conducted a review of our adopted GSP and have issued a notice of advisory to us on January 21, 2022. In the advisory letter, they have identified four potential deficiency. One of the deficiency, number one, is that the GSP do not use the same data and methodology. So, this is in regards to that, out of the entire Delta Mendota Sub Basins, there are twenty-three GSA that was created. Out of those twenty-three GSA, they have collectively created six GSP, and that the data between all six of those GSP, the methodology of those data were not consistent. Potential deficiency number two is that the GSP have not established common definitions of undesirable result in a sub-basin. Again, this is across the board for the six GSP. Deficiency number three is that the GSP in the sub-basin have not set sustainable management criteria in accordance with the regulations. Deficiency number four is that the management areas established in the plan have not sufficiently addressed the requirement of Title 23, Section 354.2. As part of the staff reports that the staff have attached, we have included an executive summary of how those four deficiency has been addressed. So, we have been working collectively with all of the GSA, all twenty-three of them, as well as, you know, as part of the six GSP. So, those adjustments was translated to a modifications or amendments of the GSP and need to be adopted by council. It is worth noting that all of the modification to the GSP is part of the common chapter of the GSP itself and does not impact the specific sections of Los Banos. Per the DWR, this GSP, this amended GSP, need to be adopted by no later than July 20 of this year. So, for this, according with the Water Code Sections 10728.4, a ninety-day notice of public hearing would need to be issued. And for this case, staff has issued a notice of intent to adopt the amended GSP back in April of 2022. So, for this, tonight, staff would like to ask council, recommend to council that the city acting as the GSA receive the staff report, open the public hearing, receive the public comments, enclose the public hearings, and adopt the resolutions approving the first amended GSP for the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractor GSP group in the Delta Mendota Sub Basin 5-022.07 as it pertained to the City of Los Banos GSA. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak in the public hearing on item seven A? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any questions from council or staff regarding this issue? Item, this item, I should say. Seeing no questions, Cheryl entertain a motion to approve-- Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6527.
All right. Thank you. And do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Protem Lambert, a second by Councilmember Jones to approve City Council Resolution Number 6527, acting as the Los Banos Groundwater Sustainability Agency, GSA, adopting the first amended groundwater sustainability plan proportions of the Delta Mendota Sub Basin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for the excellent work, Mr. Now, I move to item seven B, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of a general plan amendment 2020-02, zone change number 2020-02, and mitigated negative declaration, SCH number 2021090191, for the development of two multifamily structures totaling eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-six square feet with sixteen residential units located at 1133 F Street, more specifically identified as Assessor's Parcel Numbers 025-152-005, Stonefield Home. For this item, move to Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, as you may recall, back on June 15 of this year, the Los Banos City Council approved a motion of intent to adopt Resolution Numbers 6520 and 6521. Those were to adopt and approve mitigated negative declaration and approve a general plan amendment to redesignate approximately 0.9 acres from industrial to high-density residential at 1133 F Street. And then, you waived the first reading and introduced by title ordinance number 1198 for the F Street Multifamily Project. And so, I went through back on June 15 very thoroughly, the project with lots of discussion. So, tonight, I am just requesting that the city council consider adopting Resolution Numbers 6520 and 6521 and waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1198 by title to adopt zone change number 2020-02 to rezone approximately 0.9 acres from the General Commercial Zoning District to the High Density Residential R3 zoning district located at 1133 F Street. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Elms? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak from the public on this item, on public hearing item seven B? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to council for questions. Any council members have any questions of Ms. Susa Elms? Seeing none, Cheryl entertain a motion? Actually, there will be three, four motions to be made. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6520 as read by title.
Thank you very much. And I don't think I have read them out yet. So, if you would like to read it out, please do.
Motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6520 approving mitigated and negative declaration, SCH number 2021090191, and mitigation monitoring reporting plan for F Street Multifamily Project located at 1133 F Street, more specifically identified as Assessor's Parcel Number 025-152-005.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Mayor Protem Lambert to approve City Council Resolution Number 6520 as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. Now, we'll move on to City Council Resolution Number 6521, approving general plan amendment number 2020-02 to redesignate approximately 0.9 acres located at 1133 F Street, more specifically identified as Assessor's Parcel Number 025-152-005 from industrial to high-density residential. Do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6521 as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve City Council Resolution Number 6521 as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. For this, for the ordinance, there will be two motions. Ordinance number 1198, amending the official zoning map by rezoning property located at 1133 F Street on Assessor's Parcel Number 025-152-005 from General Commercial C1 to High Density Residential R3. Do I have a motion for the second reading, to waive the second reading? Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1198 as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Mayor Protem Lambert to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1198. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Jones, would you like to make the motion to adopt?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number-- 1198 as read by title.
Thank you. Do I, and do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So, I have a motion by Mr. Jones. Councilmember Jones, I have a second by Mayor Protem Lambert to adopt city ordinance number 1198 as read. Roll call, Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lomis?
Yes.
Feria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Ordinance is adopted.
Freya?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much. Thank you for the excellent work. Sometimes these items go very quickly, but the, sometimes they go very quickly, but that doesn't really show how much work has gone into bringing them to us. So we appreciate it very much. All right. Now we will move to advisement of public notices, and this, tonight, we had no reports. No city managers report. Our report update MCAG Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure V Committee, the only thing I have is Peninsula Clean Energy has had their bond rating improved, stepped up one step. And so that's good to hear. And we will now move to city council member reports. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I have something I'd like to read off here. Mayor, in your first term as mayor, you took the city from being the best city in Merced County and turned it into the biggest joke in just one evening. It is just really coincidental that an ex-mayor comes into town for a month and you flip against her city manager and somehow convince Deborah and Refugio to do the same. Before Josh Panero came in, we warned him about the swamp that was within City Hall. We knew we had serious issues with our HR and finance directors, so much so that we purposely excluded our HR director from the background details of Josh. When Josh first came in, he asked council for two things, support and a clear runway. That was it. Consequently, or in the first month alone, Josh, with Josh being here, we learned that the city has never had any succession planning for our employees and the very important duties they perform. Previous city managers and department heads would always promote the next employee in line regardless if they were best suited for the job or not. Consequently, as time progressed, Josh discovered the even bigger swamp, and it was on this council. Council loves to do the opposite of what policies they have in place for our staff. Prime example, Tom Freya was testing positive for COVID during our live June 22 meeting and had zero regards for anyone's safety. Just like these plastic shields in front of us.
That is not correct.
Well, at five minutes and 17 seconds in on the video, you said you're still testing positive.
No, I was not testing positive that day.
Just like these plastic shields in front of council, what's the image we're going for? Screw staff and our audience, just as long as council's protected? I think we know that if that's our message. Deborah, you claim to be a good steward of the taxpayer dollar, but you're the epitome of spending a dollar to save a dime. You have an opinion on everything, even when you have no clue about the matter at hand. Refugio, you always seem to brag about how much experience you have. Could that also include your experience as a correctional officer at Elmwood Correctional Facility? As a representative of the city, I'm even more confident that we made the right decision in hiring Josh in the first place. You had someone with drive, passion, energy, and the know-how to get things done in the city, and firing, the firing of Josh Panero was a prime example of stupidity knows no balance. On another note, I'd like to welcome our new interim finance director, Brad Kuhn, to the city. It'll be a nice change to actually have a real professional overseeing our city's finances. Thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone that showed up tonight. It shows the support we have for our city. I'm going to keep it just kind of short. I do have one council member request. I want to have a review of, a review for a council discussion on all of our city's insurance policies with specifics names of insurance, also providers, along with names of insurance producers that receive compensation from our policies. And I would like to know the last time we had an RFP for our insurance needs. And I would like to, this brought to the August 3 meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all the public who showed up tonight. This is the process of free speech and the process to address your council members that you elected. But there were some incorrect statements made by people in the public, and I know those statements probably came from Mr. Jones, about how certain people were appointed on this council, and different processes about Josh. It's, it's really unfortunate, because I would love to tell you all my thoughts behind the decisions that I had to make. It's not comfortable sitting up here, not being able to disclose to the public, but unfortunately, due to the Brown Act, which our state legislators have set up, we can't discuss it. We can't tell you the number of steps that we had to take to try to resolve what was here in our city. So again, I appreciate you all coming out. There's been an effort to slander certain people on this council by Mr. Jones, and I don't appreciate it, but you know what? I'm a big girl, and I can take it. And if they choose to go to the public newspapers to discuss what they did, that's their choice. But I would like to see, even if we disagree with each other up here, to try to be as united as we possibly can to move forward in this city. Thank you all for coming this evening. I'm sure a lot of opinions have already been formulated in your minds. They probably won't change, but it grieves me when I know that people have incorrect information out there. And it also troubles me that some of the, some of the things that were stated by public here tonight were things that were discussed in closed session, and how did they get out there? That's what I'd like to know. So, you know, for the newspaper people that are here tonight, put that in your article as well, that there were things discussed here tonight that shouldn't have gotten out to the public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Lewis, thank you. And Mr. Yamas? Let me get that right, one more time. It's not clearing hang on just a second. Next to Q. Mr. Yamas, you're not sure why we are not, oh, here we go, never mind. I had a volume control up. Very good.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, again, for being here. It is part of the process, part of free speech. I do take your comments seriously. I do, one thing that you do when you're in position such as this, is you assess and reassess. You take into account the comments from the public, and then you look at your decisions. You know, I had to make a lot of decisions in my life, and some of the decisions I wish I had not made. You know, I don't think that anyone who has had positions of leadership has ever made every decision, every decision has not always been the right decision. And you have to look at why you made it, and reassess, and look at all the documentation again. I read this point. I believe in our republic. I believe in transparency. Yes, I use that quite a bit. Oversight and responsibility and accountability. I believe deeply in those things. We just celebrated the Declaration of Independence, and one thing that reminds me of is the colonists who were British subjects, who became traders. They signed their name on that declaration, they became traders, subject to being hung or shot on sight because they rebelled against the king. And why did they rebel against the king? Because they had no input. They had no, no oversight of their lives. The colonies were being used to finance the crown. It was a major undertaking, and I don't take these things lightly. I would really like to discuss these things because they merit discussion. It affects your lives, it affects our lives, it affects the lives of our children and the future of Los Banos. It pains me that I cannot talk about it, because right or wrong, it just, those are the restrictions. And I said, as I believe in our republic, I also believe in the rule of law. I really do. You learn through life, and these things are necessary for an order of society. So I, I hear the comments, and I take them internally, and I thank everyone who came out and everyone who commented on those. Thank you, staff, for preparing those reports. I greatly appreciate that, especially the water issue. I know that's a big item on a lot of folks. I've gotten a lot of calls from that. And to let you know, anyone who calls me, I return the phone, not, I return calls, emails, whatever the case may be, and I try to interact with everybody. Again, I may get an earful, but that's what I'm here for also. So, but I try to articulate why I made a decision or where we're at. For example, B Street, I know there's a lot of comments about some of our roads. Well, I spoke with the director, I got some information, I'm disseminating that, as to why or why not some of these items are not being addressed. A lot of those items are in our new budget. Yes, Mr. Panero was part of that process, you know, this is undeniable. So again, I appreciate everyone's comments. I appreciate my fellow councilmen. Again, we may not agree on everything, but that does not mean that we need to be disagreeable. You know, the voters will decide, and we, we look at what we did, and we move on. It's not something that, that, again, I don't think that we need to be disagreeable. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. We had a beautiful 4th of July celebration, downtown association, in conjunction with the city, put on, had beautiful fireworks around the site, and everyone enjoyed their Independence Day. That day, we celebrate the fact that we can do what we did here tonight. So, at this point, we will be going into closed session. I, I can't take public.
I have a question about the SIGMA.
I, I, I'm sorry, I can't take public comment at this time. I can't take public comment or question at this time. Feel free to submit your question to city clerk, or email us, or call us there at City Hall. My City Hall number is 2098272430. And, or you're a council member, you can touch, any council members directly. But at this point, at this, in the meeting, we're not allowed to do this. It's, it's not in the agenda. Sure, sure.
Just give me a call and I'll meet with you.
Thank you very much. All right. So that takes us to the closed session, and we will read the agenda item. Closed session, public employment title, interim city manager pursuant to government code, Section 54957. There we go. Thank you. By a vote of 5-0, City Council has appointed Gregory Wellman as interim city manager commencing July 11, 2022, subject to consideration and approval of an interim city manager employment agreement. City Council adjourned to Monday, July 11, at 10:00 a.m. in the East City Council chambers to consider the approval of an interim city manager employment agreement. And we will adjourn this meeting now at, Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Yamas?
Sir, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Lambert?
I'll second.
A motion of Mr. Yamas, second by Mr. Councilmember Lambert, Mayor Portem Lambert, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Carry. Meeting adjourned at 9:04 p.m.